It's live.
Arizona.
Oh, okay.
Super Bowl. I'm gonna go scout some tickets. Oh, man.
Enjoy, guys.
You. Yeah. I got my cups and I can put on one of the orange days.
He had to take like three pens from their center.
They're still.
You always.
I did.
I have my last one last night.
Wait them in two days. All right, sign a clock, please try to give a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Morning, everyone. All right, go ahead and call this meeting to order. We need an approval of the agenda for today's. Is there any dilutions, corrections, or additions?
I'll make that motion second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We need approval of Monday, January thirtieth minutes.
So moved.
One second. Just had a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. First item on the agenda is the Carroll County Growth Partnership Fiscal Year Twenty Four Funding Request. Um, who do we want to put in the hot seat? Kim, you're up.
Where is the hot seat?
Right here. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, thank you for letting me come and visit with you this morning about Carroll County Growth Partnership. Um, I just want to start out by saying and highlighting a few things and then of course, I want to answer any questions that you might have. But in the past year, just taking a quick look back throughout twenty twenty-two, we spent some time analyzing what was Carroll Area Development Corporation and spent some time going through that, doing some workshops, asking a lot of questions and doing a lot of listening. And from that, doing a lot of learning. And that is when we kind of did a pivot and rebranding to Carroll County Growth Partnership, which we feel like really encompasses what we do in a better way verbally and shows outwardly to the county and to all of our partners what we do and and who we work for and with. So Carroll County Growth Partnership going forward in twenty twenty-three will be a year of action. We've done a lot of listening and a lot of learning and twenty twenty-three, we need to do some, we need to put that into action, truly. So what we're doing is looking forward to, and we just launched two new programs. You may have heard that, seen the press releases on a couple of grants that we just released. One of the grants is a micro grant, micro facade grant, so ten, one thousand dollar grants. So they're focused in Carroll and Carroll County. We have a grant committee made up of board members from our board. Brooke Peterson from the City of Gooden is the chair of that board. So a well-rounded board of Carroll County people. So not big grants, but certainly something that will incentivize business owners to, you know, a new sign, anything they need to do for facade improvements throughout the county. And these funds come from private investments and member dues, so they come from those, that pot of funding for CCGP. So we're excited to launch that. It's something new that CCGP has never done before. And so, and we know it's something that's needed. Business owners need that that lift up, right? So we're happy to do that. The other one that we're doing is called the CCGP Startup Accelerator Grant. It's gonna be two five thousand dollar grants. This is for startup assistance or for a business that's wanting to expand, has a great expansion project. So those, both of those grants are opening up and the information, of course, is on our website. And or you can email or call the chamber, of course, and get more information on those. But we're excited to do that, and that's just an example of launch twenty twenty-three and putting some, what we've been talking about into action and reaching out to the county businesses and and helping them grow and prosper in whatever way we can. Uh, something else that I'd like to talk about is we have, are finalizing our five oh one C three. We've done enough homework to know that we ought to have one and that we're not able to do some things by not having one. So we are certainly getting that going and looking forward to that being done. One of the projects that we will be able to do in a better way is what we'd like, what will be called the Carroll County Childcare Coalition. We hope to see this to take place. And that is going to be something that's focused on our nonprofit childcare centers throughout the county to assist with payroll. So not structures. There's grants through the state of Iowa for structures and things like that, but there's never anything focused on payroll. So that's where we want to focus, is assisting with payroll. So it's gonna be a slow-moving thing. It's nothing fast like we want it to be, right? We want it to be much faster than what it is. But we've got to start somewhere. And so that's the purpose of of this, this piece that we're working on. And you know, there's great resources and experts in the county and in our region to assist us with this. There's a few other counties in the state of Iowa who've done this coalition. So we're modeling after theirs. So we're not reinventing anything here. We're just modeling after theirs and tweaking it and taking the advice of our regional experts and our local experts on that. Another thing that maybe you've heard about that hasn't quite launched yet, because we're not quite ready, but it's Hub seven one two, which is an entrepreneurial center that will be based in Carroll. And we're looking for a physical space for this. We want it to be a regional center. So we want to partner with regional, our counties around us. We want to help our neighbors. Because the stronger we are together, the better we are together as far as entrepreneurial and business growth and expertise is concerned. And so what we've, what we've, what we've discovered, or what's very obvious, is that there is a desert of resources in Carroll County and and their surrounding counties. In the center of the state and going east, there are all the universities and there are all the Papa Johns. But honestly, when you come to this part of the state, there is, there's nothing, there's a desert of resources. And we need to change that. And you know, when it comes to entrepreneurial resources and small business assistance and development, you don't know what you don't know. And some of us don't need that assistance, but there's a lot of people who do. And there's a lot of people who have, you know, products that they, or something they've developed that they'd like to commercialize, and they have no idea how to do that. And we need to make sure that they have the resources that are easily available to do that. And not to mention adult people who would like to do that, but our youth. We need to make sure their youth have those resources at their fingertips to do that and to grow and develop those, those entrepreneurial, that entrepreneurial spirit here. But also our neighboring counties. There's those counties around us. So we'd like to see the, this be a regional project as Carroll is a regional hub. You know, we've learned recently that just by listening that some of our counties around us, you know, the Brooklyn Center's gone away. So Carroll truly is a regional hub. People more and more are needing to come to Carroll for resources. So I think it just speaks more and more to this. We are going through the process right now of applying for a grant through I E D A that will be up to two hundred thousand dollars for this. And we'll be continuing that grant process through E D A and so on and so forth. I was just at a conference and by happenstance met someone who is already connected very much with I E D A here in Iowa and will be working with him on this very project. So it's just interesting how things. Met him in Arizona, but probably was gonna meet him in March here in Iowa. So interesting how that takes place. But anyway, looking forward to this private coming together and the resources that will take in this project. So another thing that will always be top priority is, you know, the business retention expansion throughout the county. The business retention expansion program that was always in place forever with Mid-American and I E D A has gone away. And they're really, they're leaving it up to us to do whatever we feel is best for our own organization. So that's something very new and different. So we intend to work together to figure out what is best for us, because it's a very important program. We get a lot of data from that. And so working with that, we need to figure out the best program for our county, for our, our organization to retrieve the data we want. Historically, that data's been focused on larger industry. We have an opportunity to focus that data on our larger, larger industry, but also our small and medium-sized businesses as well. So we intend to do that. So we will get a broader picture of our overall businesses throughout the county. So, um, good things come out of, you know, situations like that. So JCPenney's remains to be a top priority. Working with Retail Coach remains to be a top priority and following some leads there. A project that we started with, Mike Pogie Weaver, before he left, was called Project Home. And I would like to say that we might have started this with Mike Pogie Weaver, but it is a Carroll County project from our vantage point, because it's a project to market Carroll County to bring people back home. And to not only bring people back home, but to market Carroll County to move people to our county and to show people our assets, our beautiful communities and what we have in Carroll County. So that is a project that we will keep working on and expanding as time goes on. Another project that we were able to start again and since the pandemic is access Washington and that trip was a good one again and, you know, just one thing that came out of it or or a piece that was discussed there quite a bit. Just an example is the Rural Community Demonstration Program, as you know already about with St. Anthony Regional Hospital and our, and our county hospitals as well. But the impact for St. Anthony's is a three to four million dollars to their bottom line to keep that program running. And so it's important to, as you, as you already know, to get in front of our legislators and our Congress, every, all of our electives and and talk about that. Those things are important. So with that, you know, we're looking forward to the future with new leadership and new programs and new thoughts and just new opportunities. There's a lot of good things on the horizon and and we look forward to communication and transparency and whatever that means. You know, to you as a group of supervisors, we certainly want to, you know, to answer any questions. And I welcome any thoughts and ideas that you have. Please don't hesitate to reach out and let us know anything that crosses your mind that you think that would be a good idea that, in addition to what we're doing, could be done. So I thank you for this opportunity to come visit with you again this year. We appreciate your, your leadership throughout the county. We appreciate your financial support, of course. And we appreciate you letting us be the economic development piece and doing what we can to further the economic development throughout the county. Thank you. Questions?
Thoughts on a supervisor being on the executive board?
I think that's a good idea. I think for input throughout the county and transparency. I don't think there's.
It looks, I mean, if your ask is the same, which eighty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-two, that's one of the biggest. Yeah, it's about thirty percent of your overall budget and yeah, it could be recommended that.
Yeah. The restricted retail coach, what is that? Have you spent on certain deal?
Yeah. Yeah.
Something downtown or is it?
That retail coach is, it's a project in partnership with the City of Carroll, working on bringing retail. Yeah.
Awesome.
Downtown, but also in the city of Carroll.
Is it a third party that does the, right?
Yeah.
And that was.
And a lot of data.
That was solely city provided funding, but now there's seven thousand five hundred that comes out of the regular budget, correct?
Um, that's just out of our rate or our general fund? Is that what you're looking at?
I know, I just, I thought the city funded it wholly and.
No.
Yeah. That, so it looks like the city puts in fifty thousand and then seven thousand five hundred comes out of the general budget.
So the city funds the retail coach fee of thirty thousand. And then twenty thousand of that goes towards, that's when we hired Matt.
Okay.
So we fund Matt in partnership with the city. So we, CCGP takes on a greater part of funding Matt.
For benefit of the other two, and I don't think we've given report since you did. But tell that the ability or fee structures changed.
Yes.
And what, and the reason why?
Right. So we kind of started doing some research on board dues and found out that we were a little behind on our board due structure. And so, you know, when I was with the S B D C, I was based out of Fort Dodge and I attended the growth, Fort Dodge Growth Alliance meetings on a regular basis. So I, it was easy for me to call up there and do some research, so I did. And just with other development corporations, in addition to Fort Dodge, we did quite a bit of research and found out that we were quite a bit below where we should be on our due structure. So we are raising, we presented all that information to our board and we will be raising our dues. So our new dues will bring in an additional twenty thousand.
So that'll be fifty thousand for dues and others.
Yes. And those, those dues and our private investment alone will cover the, the grants.
That was to cover the grants. To these grants.
Right. So.
That was the point I wanted to make.
Yeah.
Do you think you have any fallouts from memberships or people that belong to it with the preschool?
You know, I certainly hope not. We're going to, when we send out our, our invoices, we're going to send out, put together a piece, an infographic piece and letter explaining. But with our homework, they are, you know, we're, we really need to do this. I mean, it's, it's concern, it's a concern. So.
But the dues part of it also, the like cities and nonprofits don't pay as much as regular dues.
Right. Yeah. So we kept those all really basically the same at a much, much lower rate, but but the private dues as well. Yeah.
Who's the executive board right now?
Mike Franny is our president. Vice President is Adam Schweers. Secretary Treasurer is Kim Teepin Tyler. And then our county rep, if you will, is Don Meyer from the City of Manning. And then President Appointee is Jim Frill, just, just joined the board. And past president is Jim Allen is still on the board. And then the new city manager, when he arrives, will be on the exec and then, you know, whoever the supervisors.
Perhaps the supervisor. Um, who's secretary?
Secretary Treasurer is Kim.
Okay. They're mixed. I was just looking blast years. It said Howie and then Kim for two different ones.
Oh.
That's why I was.
You know what? I guess I would have to look.
So that, what's on there was, you know, then, then November, something like, I have never was, those elections take place in December. So so we can say.
We get a new list.
Yeah, we'll get you a new list.
Thank you.
It has all the new exec board members, where, what their positions are, and then the new classes and things like that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Does anybody have any more questions?
I have one question. I'm surprised we never mentioned before. So the goal is providing references. And so does that then make a contribution, Dr. Bowe, to the membership contribution?
No, not necessarily. But it would make us, it would allow us to do charitable things, such as charitable, when we, you know, we consider where we needed to be able to pay charitable to the return. So and just at the conference, I would just add, you know, it was highly recommended if you don't have a file one C three, you should, so.
What is the cost of doing the file launches? Right.
Yeah. I know.
When you guys say private investment, what is that? People are privately giving you money or donations or?
Individuals and businesses.
Perfect.
Yeah.
But that's separate from your grant fund.
Separate from the dues.
As well, too. Yeah.
Right, right. And I, and I can certainly share the, you know, and we haven't had a board orientation. And we should do that. We should do that, but, but clearly all of you, but but I can certainly share the information that we did with the other communities, the comparisons and things like that. And it's surprising. It really should, it might have.
Well, like years passed. When we get into the budget season, somebody important here, I will, or Gene will, like, you know. But thank you for taking the time and bringing that request. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, man.
Well, thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Item number two is new opportunities, fiscal year twenty-four funding request. But Chad, you only have seven minutes. Is that even possible?
Oh.
Yeah.
Is it possible?
I can get you back on track. As you all know, I'm Chad Jensen. I'm the CEO with New Opportunities. And I see the funding request is out there. It's our yearly funding request. It is the same dollar amount as it has been for years and years and years. No changes with that. I do have just an additional handout that I would like you all to have. No, Gene likes extra copies of this as well. And this is, this is a, this is just a, a summary of all different services that we provide. If you go to our website, which of course is at newop.org, it goes into a little more detail what each of these services are. But going back into your packet that, that we would have sent out to you, that, that dollar monthly requesting is thirty-two thousand dollars. And that's divided out into eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars for prevention, which is a match program. It's really, really important and we have to get local match for a lot of our state and our federal grants we're getting. Thirteen thousand dollars for a Carroll County Family Development Center. That, of course, is where we're providing emergency services, crisis services, heating, energy assistance kinds of programs and our food pantry. And then our final line item, there is seven thousand eighty-five dollars for our treatment program, which, of course, is for substance use disorders. And then we're doing more with opioid addiction, unfortunately. Continue to do quite a bit of that. So if we go back towards the middle of your packet, I believe, it has fiscal year twenty twenty-two household serve. And it's gonna look something like this. I think.
Huge seven.
Thanks, Mr. Stan. And so these are the households that were served for this last year. And so it's always interesting to see, you know, the, the numbers, the households we're working with, five thousand two hundred and ninety-three households we've worked with. And then the economic impact that we've made to Carroll County, if you look down below, you know, the, the low-income heating energy assistance program, which is over three hundred and two thousand dollars. The crisis payments, now that is the general assistance, our water program, there are COVID supplemental. So that is what that hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars was. So anyway, there's, there's kind of some basic, basic information. And then the next, the next page, it should be your next page, is your information given or referrals made in Carroll County. Yep, it is. And that is one thousand eighty-nine. As you can tell, we're meeting with a lot of people and getting a lot of phone calls and just really helping to get the ser, get the services out in Carroll County to let folks know where they can go for these different kinds of programs if we're not providing them ourselves. So really an important service to Carroll County that, that we're able to provide and or make all these kinds of different referrals. So that's really kind of it in a nutshell. I can go into more details if you like. We, we sure appreciate Gene. Boy, every year I've got to tell you countless meetings that this guy goes to for us. He, seriously, it's huge. He is by far serves the most time on our board of directors between Head Start Policy Council meetings, our, our board of directors, our executive committees. There's always something going on and then plus signatures, different contracts and transfer required aboard a president's signature. So we sure appreciate that. I got it. And appreciate your support. It's a lot to it, so.
So family planning, you guys lost that, correct? The grant for family planning?
We didn't lose it. We chose not to. We chose not to.
Probably killed, took that.
That is right. Yeah, we did not want to provide that service.
This is, well, it's on topic, but kind of off topic. This is more of a budgeting question. So the general assistance program, were you planning on submitting any requests for increase in funding for that or fees?
I understand we were not. We're still happy with, with how that's going. I can check Rowan, but from what I understand, you know, the amount that you're giving us to provide to the families is pretty close to being sufficient. So and that's where our fees, you know, to pay our staff and certainly, I kind of think we're still. So it really fits up. It really fits good with the services that we provide.
I thought it, you, it could be seven people, you know.
Does anybody have any more questions? No, I got two more things for you. One, continuing education for Rowan. It doesn't need to be an agenda item, I for one. I, did you put a price on how much that class was?
I didn't. I, I don't think there's a price for class. It's, the only thing would be your mileage and your time. You know.
I for one think continuing education is, is a huge. I think this would be a good class for Rowan to go to. It's not just up to me, but in my opinion.
So, so I guess I would request that if I could put together a dollar amount of what per time away from the office and then mileage.
Yeah.
I mean.
Just a.
I mean, it would, yeah, it'll be.
Then I want to keep you aware. I did receive a letter from you from December ninth. I don't want you to make, I don't want you to feel like I've forgotten about you. We are going to start looking at this now because we do have some money. So we're going to look ahead and try to come up with some ideas on what to do with some of that opioid settlement money. Obviously, that's, fentanyl is a huge issue. Carroll, whether or not people believe it or not, but Carroll County does have some issues and it's a lot. Starting in our youth, and I think everybody up.
Starting in our, um, youth, and I think everybody at this table will probably have a different recommendation of where we spend that money, um, or how we go about it, but. So we'll start, in the future, we'll, uh, try to set up some meetings and bring everybody to the table that can make a difference.
Thank you.
You've got to get some ideas.
We do, we do have some ideas that we can, we can, you know, bring to the table as well, so, uh. We're doing, we're doing quite a bit already, so we just love some additional support and to expand some of those services as well. We do have the medication assisted treatment, the MAP program, uh, that's where we're helping, um, patients who are getting off of the opioids. We're giving them some medication to help with the cravings and everything else, but that's partnered with outpatient counseling, you don't just get. The medication and then.
Because it's not the medication, basically, you would.
It is, but it's way, way, um, yes, it, it is.
But it's tapering him down.
It is tapering it down and it's monitored by a physician and there's, there's a lot to it, but yeah, it is, it is, but. That outpatient counseling or intensive outpatient counseling with that is so, so very, very important.
So I think we bring everybody, you know, we'll get some community members, I think Manning needs to be involved in the conversation, um. I think another recommendation from, by me would be, um, we've got a lot of AA and NA meetings that happen throughout the week, and I think to really physically see. Yourself, I think everybody should attend one and, because you can go into it and just be a visible person and really get a feel for what's going on in our county. Going forward, that's all I got, night there, you gotta go. Thanks for all you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, it's actually nine thirty one. I'm gonna go ahead and open to a public hearing to consider the deposition of the Greta Depot, and I received. One offer so far. Updated to this offer was brought to the board, the copy was this morning. I think we can take a look at this offer, but we cannot approve it because it is not an agenda item, this is just a public hearing. Um, we have not received any other offers on this said property. I can see one issue in particular is this, um, offer is expired as of tomorrow. Is there anybody in the room that would like to make a comment on this particular? We can update the expiration date, that's not wrong.
We can accept because it's not an agenda item of pre, um, accepting an offer, we just have the public hearing today, so this allows everybody to.
But she says they could.
I have not seen the office, so I have no visual as to what, what this is all about, outside of the fact that the property. From what I understand, goes back to revisionals. Laws in the original contract way back in eighteen seventy, whenever this was all put together. And at this point, that's the reason that I'm here, because I do have property on the line. Ten acres, so I, I'm real curious as to what's, what's happening.
So we're wanting to buy the depot right in Greta, so it's only that fifteen hundred square acre that we're making an offer.
Point three six acre.
I'm sorry, fifteen thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 point three six acre. So it's just.
You're making a wrong, wrong, the whole.
For, for the depot and the land. Yeah, so we're wanting to, it's in work condition, and we want to get it cleaned up and then hopefully.
That part of over there. It's, it's good attraction to Greta, I fully agree on that, and it should be left to go.
Yeah, it's, we, we don't want to see, see that happen, we want to make it into a little museum, have a little Greta history in there, the railroad history. Into all of that.
Yeah, I think Katie knows that in the past, the board has. Contributed to it or worked with it.
That would be nice to have someone privately taking care of life concern.
Taking care of it. As set, but not with the, uh, once again, then we go back to the revisionary clause. Someday it could disappear for you. Which, which you will not, yeah, I don't believe.
That's why. No, section or number eight was amended on your latest, um, proposal. Which, which is the abstracting.
The county attorney keeps track of such things, I believe, and I have had discussion way back twenty years ago with him about this, and he says. Well, I can't, I can't answer your question because I have to abide by what county board. Who he was working for and still is. Well, I have no object. Trying to protect your.
Neil?
Yeah, called by name.
And I will say to you, the first time appearing this, um, it has been on our agenda, this is our third time. And the county attorney is overseeing this because legally, I'm not an attorney, nobody that sits at this table is an attorney, so we've been advised through John Warden. He, he reads the drafts of anybody, if we were to get another offer, he reads it and then advises us kind of what to do, obviously, with none of us having.
My history goes all the way back.
They would be assuming, uh, the responsibility, and then if that property were to ever. Be sold, the county does have first right of refusal, so it wouldn't just go anywhere, it would come right back to us. The options are, we don't, yeah, if we choose to accept this offer, the options are. It's now on their hands or whoever, well, obviously, nobody else gave, uh, an offer. Or we let it go dilapidated, dilapidated, and it just sits there and it rots because nobody wants to do anything with it, and I think that it would definitely help with the city of Greta. And as far as the trail, I think they had mentioned at one point adding in some bathrooms in there, which would be beneficial as well. Especially since trail riding has become such a big thing. Yeah, I, I get your, your, your point from the history of. Dealing with maybe a railroad ish situation. Yep.
The county's money is.
Nope, in, in.
That's why the, the change that on there is under abstracting, um, was made.
Yeah, so this.
In the counties.
The potential future owner assumes all responsibility, so the county would not be liable. Um, I don't think there's anything on line. Currently, no comments, I'm running. Make a motion because of public hearing at, not emotionally, just closing it at nine thirty eight. Can I safely say that it would be on the agenda? Per John's legal opinion with this offer, I would assume it's going to be on next week's agenda to accept or deny.
The board will take vote on it.
So.
Again, it needs the county attorneys.
Sure.
The conservation board of five zero to go ahead, they can't sell county land, that's the board of supervisors, with the county attorney, yes.
Long process.
It is, and I want to thank you guys for your patience. Would you say?
Spring's coming, yeah.
Okay, thank you anyways. All right, item number four, we have two plaques to approve.
That, the date on that, yeah, will have to be updated though, too, right?
Yes.
Yes.
February seventh, right?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a long meeting, so if you want to wait till March, it's. Oh, the date, yeah, 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 sorry, sorry, I was thinking another thing, I was thinking about you coming to our meeting, um, the date, yeah, I'll, um. Do you want to revise that?
I'll revise that to Sunday in March, just to be safe, the way it keeps going.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve both parts.
Motion, is there a second? There's a motion in a second and then there's discussion, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Real quickly, we will go over the union agreement, so Courtney can get this into our. Budget. Did anybody have any questions? I think we've all had discussions with, either Jamie or. Jane or Scott.
Yeah, we can, yeah.
Okay, so, for, for the agreement, the ambulance. The ambulance is getting a zero increased on their upfront pay. And all this increase is due on the, uh, on call time. Changed it from, uh, four dollars and something up to seven fifty, so it's to be based at minimum wage. And they've also, they are stepping away from the, um, longevity pay that the county provides. And they're doing a step program, and I will give credit to the gentleman on the ambulance union. Step forward here and provided this, actually Scott and I met with you earlier. And this is all done, what their thought is by doing some of these things will help retention of employees and also for hiring.
We're losing people to neighboring counties.
Lose them to other people and we're having a hard time hiring, so, uh, it was a plan that they put together, I. Appreciate their efforts, and I think it's, it's very well worth it. Sitting around there, pointing the call for four dollars, it's kind of, we guess it's.
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. First place here for two board signatures. Any board, because I would recommend these two since they sound. That's fine, it just, that's not safe share or anything. Yeah, I would have these two do it since you guys. Um, the next item where you guys are signing is the semi-annual treasures report. Lisa's not here this morning, so Courtney's gonna go ahead and run through this real quick.
Okay, um, I'm sure you all had a chance to do with us, um, obviously, we use twice a year. So, um, treasure prepares the report and boards it to me, and I basically checked it with, uh, my figures to make sure her and I are. Both on the same page as far as balance, we are, um, this report is from July through December. Um, we'll see the totals there, beginning treasures balance, um, and the ending treasures balance. Ending treasures balance, twelve thirty one, twenty. I think she has the wrong dates on there, so it should be twenty two, yep. Um, let's table this because since she's not here, I can't ask her, but, yeah, it's from seven one twenty one.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and do that. Never mind, I will check with her when she gets back.
All right, item number seven. Is to consider requests from Verizon Wireless as condo installation at the courthouse cell teller. Site, the east side of the courthouse, we have had conversations both with Zach and with Jason downstairs. If there was any concerns or anything about them having fiber ran into this, and there was no concerns brought forward, company is Tara. Does anybody have any questions?
Bringing fiber into the building. Concern is that they're panning in through that wall, but that's, they've got to do that regardless. Get an investment. I'd make a motion that we improve. The, fair to sign the document, the second.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, so the first one is their signature for the request. Accepting their request, and the second one is person to contact in order to coordinate construction, so I'm not sure. Zach?
Jason or Zach?
All right, so I'll fill out that. One, signing this, we can move to item number eight, discuss Ray Gray County Policy, County Ordinance, Ordinance number twenty seven. As everybody's probably clearly aware, with advertising that's going on, um, Ray Gray, they are going to be an overnight stop for Ray Gray. Um, obviously, I'll help the date here, David need to be changed.
But if I read it right, this affects Mount Carmel, Maple River and Roseville only, would that be correcting? Not incorporated townships?
It's, uh, any, any unincorporated.
It was awesome to the rural, so they set up, I think this was set up basically so that the people that would set up any stands up.
I didn't have a conversation with the county attorney, he said it was fine to go ahead and approve this. I would agree with him in the comment stating it would have been nice to have a little bit of a conversation, not a heads up prior to just. Anybody else that received, although I didn't, on.
I just knew that there was an, you mean that, that right, right?
I know that there's a meeting tomorrow morning with the ambulance and secondary roads was not invited.
Which they should be.
I don't know how many meetings we're gonna have, I don't know if the sheriff was invited.
So basically, all we have to do is to update the date on it then.
So.
A little bit more than that, yeah, it's an ordinance, so we can consider this to be our introduction and our first reading. Um, then we would need to set the date for a second reading. And then, um, set a date for a third final reading, you can wave that at the second hearing, which happens frequently, and if you're just changing the date.
Can we make it be the twenty fifth, too, being there overnight in here?
What's that?
Can we add the twenty fourth and twenty fifth, because they're overnighting, where this was just a pass through in two thousand eighteen. Yeah, I think it needs to be the twenty fourth.
And I would also recommend if you guys would like skipping next one since I won't be here. We have to, we have plenty of time.
So does John need to re-review it after we get the dates right, or?
I don't know, if you're just, you're just changing the dates, I don't see that as being an issue, but.
Yeah, I read it, and it's pretty clear.
We should make it two days.
Yeah, way out of town, yes.
Was there a way that we could do this without heatwood dates? Maybe not, I suppose not.
And you're gonna continue to do the permits? Because of section fours, they permits, they're unincorporated areas, maybe obtained from the auditor's office. I guess we're setting up shop on, on gravel road. So I guess I need to figure out where we have applications for permits.
I think Mount Carmel might be a pass through town, be a guest, because if they're coming through Greta, and perhaps Lidded Elk with their Incorporated.
We have markups to do on this anyway, so we'll be making them.
Should that also be that they, we don't do a food permit anymore license. As done by the state, do we have, do they have to provide us with a state license?
It says right in there, they have to, uh. Have a license and insurance.
Have a license and insurance.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I ju- I just found it. Neil, you had a question?
Well, I know that a neighbor in county went along and there's some litigation went right back went through. Uh, although I do welcome Ragby to Carroll County, I want to make sure that our county attorney feels we're well protected against any litigation. Should anything happen. There's one providers, et cetera.
But you're, you're talking strictly, and that was in regard to the road condition, right?
I think that was.
Yeah.
And a personal.
And then this is more, this is just on vendors, is what it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
But your, your recommendation is to make sure, sure.
Come to all that, and they're all counties protected against any kind of location, whether it be. Rider or rider's family or et cetera.
What, what did Zach say? They won't give us a route for how long, right? It'll be the end of, usually end of March before they give us the route. We don't know what's fall towns, but again, there's some type of organizational meeting with Ragby and the county tomorrow. I just know if the ambulance is attended, I do not know, I think secondary roads and sheriff should attend.
I don't, I don't think that they're gonna know that route then neither yet.
Yeah.
Just my understanding what Ragby does, they come out, made right these different routes, see what is.
After the frost is out of the ground, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I appreciate that, Neil, thank you. Um, just out of curiosity, if they're gonna use our ambulance services, do they get reimbursed at all for?
I know, we'll find out tomorrow from Jamie.
It's pre-ratus. Being that welcoming party. And, and they will, that will not only be in our ambulance, they will have additional ambulance.
Yeah.
All went through.
I was just curious, okay, so on.
God forbid of any. But we need to consider that the first reading of.
So, on this ordinance, do you want to update the dates and then set a date? For the second reading, or do you want to just consider this, we had a discussion and then set a date for the first reading?
We should.
I mean, we're not, we have a lot of time.
Yeah, we should.
Let's, let's just do this as a discussion, and I think.
You do updates.
Let's run this past John, what he thinks needs to be done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect, thanks, Courtney. Item number nine. Authorized chair to sign boundary and annexation survey annual response form.
Good morning.
How are you?
Monday, I'm good, how are you? So, uh, for those of you who aren't familiar with the boundary and annexation survey, it's what I submit every year, it's the US Census. Um, and they, um, have their own program, which is QGIS, so it's different than our ArcGIS. So, I go in and make the edits for our annexations, or if we had any changes. And in two thousand twenty-two, we had three changes, three approved annexations. Uh, the first one was recorded April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, instrument number two thousand twenty-two fourteen forty. That is lot four of the northwest quarter of the section sixteen in Eden Township, so we're down in Templeton. Uh, it's the lot east of the Templeton Rye Distillery, Templeton Ryan Spirit Spotted. So, that's, it's for their, oh, it's for their expansion, so that was an approved annexation already recorded. Um, and these are all already recorded, I'm just kind of going over them to show you what I did. Um, November first, two thousand twenty-two, instrument number two thousand twenty-two thirty-five twenty-three. Was lot one of the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter, section two, Glidden. So, Glidden Incorporated Incorporated that, um, corner east of Timber on Highway thirty. So, it's on the east-hand side for Michael Mole, Molly, Molly, apologize. Yes, it's on the north side of thirty. Yep. So, that was approved and recorded, um, November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, instrument number two thousand twenty-two thirty-seven forty-three. Um, this is two parts, uh, part of the northeast of the northwest of section twenty-nine Grant Township. And a part of the northeast northwest section twenty-nine of Grant Township, that's the APQS and Resac property that was incorporated. So, I went in on their program, I drew it all in, and I'm getting ready to submit, I've tied the files from their quarters office with the instrument numbers, which they request. And a benefit of completing the survey every year is it creates accurate boundaries for when they do our. Uh, census every ten years, and that's how they allocate funds for hospitals, um, elderly. Healthcare, education, housing, all of that, so just getting that done every, every year helps. Um, keep them up to date so that they can do their census blocks for us. That's that.
I made a motion from the board to approve, or allow me to sign this paper.
So. Second.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Yeah, and all those things you just reviewed, don't have a change on it, it's, it's all business.
True.
No, no residential work.
Yeah, that's very true. But we have to notify them to keep our boundaries correct, otherwise I'd have a lot of work before the end of the, end of the year, getting all this correct.
You're right, it's better to keep this current.
Well, look what happened out when we did the census, so I knew hope there where they had annexed that in, but they annexed it in after the census. So, then we had to create new precincts for voting.
Yeah.
So, that's kind of, so I'm glad she does this, because it would be a pain. I'm trying to figure that out ten years.
Really good?
Yep. I was just gonna say, can I fill in the date for you? Thanks, guys. All right.
See you tomorrow morning.
See you tomorrow night.
Item eleven, there are ten, is manure management annual updates, we have Twin Hills. East or Twin Hills LLC, east side, section thirty-two, Pleasant Valley Township. Change prop rotation or optimum yields and used manure analysis. There are two committee reports.
Last Tuesday, I had county attorneys, free budget. At nine, nine-thirty, we had a meeting on asbestos abatement, perhaps the order that, uh. Everything's gonna be done in a rough timeframe with a new estimate, correct?
Yes, and let me, let me touch on that since you brought it up, I detected Jeff on. Whatever day you were in, twenty.
Thursday.
Um. He is going to rewrite that email, and I asked specifically to be more specific on things that are already in the first. Quote, and the additional things that would be in.
Yes.
What he's talking about, that first book was gonna be what, thirty-eight thousand, right?
I asked for clarification.
Okay, uh, just, it was very broad.
Yes, it was, and then I also asked for clarification on floor one and floor two. On items that were already accounted for and ones that would be.
Change orders.
Yeah, and I have not received anything, he said he should have it done, but I.
Wish for possible total abatement, which is gonna be a.
Yeah.
One big pain, and probably upstairs, we're probably not gonna do. At least we have, I think we're just gonna have to, as we change four and after, have somebody coming up a bit individually.
So. Then on Wednesday, um, at eight o'clock, Mike and I met with Megan, did the home care. Pre-budget, at nine o'clock, Mike and I met with Jason Christensen on conservation, ten o'clock. Jean and I met with Courtney for the Board of Supervisors and the Auditor Budget, eleven o'clock. Mike and I met with, um, Dalton. On Thursday, Jean, Stephanie, Mike and I were at the ISAC statewide supervisor meeting. Friday, and that was in Des Moines, Friday, um, new opportunities. Um, chamber coffee, and they're, uh. Remodeled, so to speak, um, fire damaged building. Friday also went out to secondary roads to look at an overhead door that was damaged. Next week, or this week, sorry, I have, um, tomorrow at nine o'clock, Stephanie and I are meeting with Sarah. For P and Z, GIS and passport, pre-budget, ten o'clock, meeting with Jamie on ambulance. Wednesday, nine o'clock, Jean and I are meeting with Tony for Veterans Affairs. Friday, um, second judicial district. So, yeah, questions?
Nice to you, have one day next week.
Yeah.
I can go next, uh, last Tuesday, new opportunity, sign documents, and then, uh. Had the meeting here at the courthouse regarding asbestos meeting. Uh, also on Tuesday, I got called into Temple Savings Bank in regard to the situation, and I. I've talked to you about that, and that thing is, um. Uh, since then, has gotten out to on their website, or news. Newsletter about law enforcement, keep an eye on what's going on there, and also. She is going to send, as they send out the next, uh, wires, transfers, suggest these small accounts. Look at, I'll sit in your account numbers, and also the software comes, and it brought up the speed on what's going on, so. We're at least on the front end of this thing, trying to help all that issue. Then Wednesday, met with Dalton and Lisa regarding that same situation. Um, then Wednesday was, had met with, had the meeting with the auditor, his budget, pre-budget. Also, met with the Board of Health, pre-budget, and also environmental health, pre-budget. And then Thursday, statewide supervisors meeting, Friday, uh, had the chamber coffee out of new opportunities for. Grand reopening of the building that was, had the fire in, then had the sheriff's budget and also the roads' budget on Friday. Uh, then come, this next week, I have, uh, tomorrow, I've got to be in Des Moines for ISAC scholarships for a final review or interviews with. The finalists. And then on Wednesday, I have, uh, the veterans' budget, pre-budget. That's, so I got a slower week this week.
Which means you have one day, cool. Um.
One day.
All right, last week, I had the pre-budget for the sheriff and secondary roads. Um, I did go out to new opportunities and sort of with Scott, who didn't mention it, but their chamber coffee. And I did attend the statewide supervisor meeting, a lot of that had a lot of information about the pipelines and anything going forward. Obviously, right now, it doesn't really affect Carroll County, but could potentially in the future. And then was here for the abatement meeting, and this next week, oh, and I have the newspaper radio this week. Tomorrow, I will have the recorders. Nope, that's today, yes, today I have the recorder's pre-budget. Tomorrow, I have the ambulance GIS and passive pre-budget, and I think we're gonna try and fit the treasures pre-budget as well. And then I am gone.
Next week is sunscreen.
Yes, and we'll be gone. If you have any questions, concerns, comments, please, can I call anybody else on the super. You'll survive. Okay. Courtney, what do you got?
She said.
Oh, sorry, I don't really have anything else.
Okay, last week I had radio on newspaper, um. On Wednesday, I had, uh, home care, conservation, IT, border health, and environmental ser- services. Uh, pre-budgets, Thursday, went to statewide supervisors. And on Friday, I met with the state community health consultant and, uh, learned all about border health, so.
You did, you met with her?
Yeah.
Awesome.
An hour, hour and a half meetings.
Is there anybody else?
No.
What's your name?
Heather Bombay.
So, you're like that public health professional, right?
No, but no, I'm learning, no laws.
It is a lot to it.
Yes.
There is.
Um, I've had some good meetings over them, and through the free budgets that I figure we've learned a, learned a lot.
Good.
Got a good foot on the ground finally, yeah. And that's it. Yeah, I guess I'll tell you twice, so this week, I'll have, uh. Every quarter today, pre-budget. Um. Tomorrow, I'm gonna meet with Zach Anderson hopefully, and, uh, go over his budget a little bit and learn a little bit about secondary roads.
And potentially.
And potentially have a.
Lisa at eight o'clock, right?
Not yet. Okay.
And Courtney, you don't have anything for next week?
Oh, well, I didn't, I thought you meant like to talk about.
Yeah, do you have anything you want to talk about?
No, no. Next week is thirteenth, so first thing we'll do is canvas the results of the election that we're having tomorrow. Um, to get ahold of Mr. Eric New, and he will be here to do the office, so. Um, I would recommend go ahead and open the meeting and then do the canvas first thing, and then we can get into the meeting after that, um.
So, number two will be, sorry, um, number two will be swearing in, uh.
Well, it won't, it doesn't need to be an agenda item.
Okay.
So, number one will be canvas the election, we'll go ahead and do the, and then just proceed with the agenda.
With the.
There's no motion or any action the board has to take, so.
Okay.
Normally, we do it before the meeting, but we can't really do it before, because.
And I can come in later that week and sign. Do I have to sign the thing?
Yeah, the abstract, yeah, but that can be.
The canvas.
Canvas and the abstract, there's two different documents, but that can be signed when you get back, or if you're not here.
Or with the vice chair signing.
Vice chair.
Well, you guys all have to sign it.
Oh.
Okay, so, um, the certi- the winner's certificate is signed by the chair, but the vice chair could sign that. Just, um, so next week, we have region twelve coming in, and then I put that resolution back on the agenda, um, for Rick. After Rick explains what's going on, I think I'll have a tax suspension. On there, and I know that you guys had said, if we get another one of those, let's do some research.
Yeah.
About the property, so I did do that, I don't really wanna.
And you sent it to us all?
Well, I will, um, next week for the agenda, I contacted the city, got some background on the property, there's no issues.
Okay.
At all, um.
Is this the one I contacted you about?
Yes, yes. So, um, taxes are current right now, but they do have some taxes that'll be due, um, end of, end of March, that they'd like suspended. And then they are eligible to have them suspended for the next year as well, so we can certainly do. A motion for the current and then a motion for.
So, if they're suspended to properties, so.
Yeah, yeah, and. Owner, well.
It'll be an indefinite.
They have to, they have to reapply every year.
Okay.
Um, and prove that they're still eligible, um, normally in the situation with this individual, they are gonna continue to be eligible till they're no longer living there, so. But.
Could you understand that person?
But I could when they.
Okay.
On the phone, no, but in person, yes, because, um. When I can see people's mouths when they're talking, it's a.
I, 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 well, first of all, I'm a woman, there wasn't camera.
Um. Will you add on the calendar, not for next week, but the week after, to review committee appointments?
That's gonna be on the twentieth, on President's Day.
Yeah, is there a reason why we're not meeting on President's Day if you're here?
County is not, the county courthouse is not open.
Right.
Um, that is one of our official holidays, the only reason I'm here is because of the special elections we have in March. So, my understanding, the clerk of courts open, but the county is not, so I will be here. So, you, we can either meet on Monday or Tuesday, I don't care, doesn't matter to me. But it is technically a holiday for you guys, so.
But it doesn't matter, I'm, I would like to Monday, that's me.
We have that, um, HVAC meeting scheduled on the twenty-first at eight.
Oh, yeah, we do, you're, you're vetoed out.
Okay, the next day. On Tuesday, so do that before the board meeting, okay? So, no President's Day, we get the day off.
One day. Your loyal county auditor's office will be open.
But you'd be probably the only one up here, wouldn't you?
I told the gals that they could have the holiday, and I said, because I figured I'd have budgets, so I can be working on it, right, so.
Election stuff, you can't be.
No, I, I'd be doing, um, I, we have to be open, I, I think it's the last day that somebody can. Pre-register to vote. I think. There's, there's something there.
So, you'd probably get pulled out.
Possibly with an early voter, but, um.
It's fine, we're gonna stick with Tuesday.
Tuesday, Tuesday.
Since we're already here, anyway.
Yeah.
All right, we're in order for a motion voter.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, where are your, thank you.
Yeah, I probably.
Well, we didn't say who it was.
No, but.
Carroll City Limits, or?
It is.
And I don't, no.